Huh?
Good. Good evening, everyone. Whoops. Good evening, every...
Still pointing.
Can you hear me out there? There we go. Good evening, everyone. We'll call the city council meeting for October 6th, 2008 to order. First thing on the agenda, as always, is determination of a quorum. Jack, if you call the roll, please.
Quaker?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Adcock?
McCroy?
Here.
Martenson?
Here.
Wifenbach?
Ocrepke?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
The quorum.
Thank you. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or a pager, if you could please turn that off, turn it to vibrate or otherwise destroy, we'd appreciate it. And the other thing is, if you notice, I'm going to be lucky to make it through the meeting. I think I have the October crowd like an awful lot of folks in town here, so please bear with me. At this point, we will have, for invocation, a moment of silence. If I could have everybody please rise for a moment of silence to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Next thing on the agenda, as always, is the adoption of the agenda. If anyone on the council or on the staff would like to add anything to the agenda that is not listed, please turn your light on. Any additions to the agenda? Any additions? Seeing none. Chair would look for a motion to adopt the agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the September 15th city council meeting and the special council meeting on September 17th and September 18th. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This evening, we have no awards or recognition, so we will move into the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express any concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. And just a reminder, to your left, my right, is our press table. We do have speaker request forms. If there's any items you wish to speak to, if you could fill that out, put the, either the item number, or in this case, put the public comment under the items to be discussed, we'd appreciate it. That way, we can keep track and make sure we don't overlook anybody. Okay? With that, we will go to the general public comment period. We do have a speaker request form from Mike Derby, 2735 Country Club Drive. Mr. Derby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm Mike Derby. I'm owner of the Canyon Lake Resort, and I do have a couple comments this evening. One, I just want everybody to know, and it goes without saying, that I love Rapid City. I grew up here and I spent my adult career here in business and have learned through the years, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, or the legislature, or the many boards I've been on, that a person should look at the facts, listen to both sides of a story, and not let emotion rule the day. I am here, not only for myself, but for the many developers who hope to do business in Rapid City. It is important that personal and property rights be protected and respected and should not be unfairly or arbitrarily denied. Speaking of respect, I have a lot of respect for our fire chief and his staff and have been appalled at how they've been treated by the citizens of Chapel Valley and by some of you as elected officials. They are their professionals, and they should be treated as such, and their recommendations should be listened to. There's been many rumors about the Canyon Lake Resort, the latest of which I want to talk about. There's currently a rumor going around that the Canyon Lake Resort is trying to buy a house up on the top of Chapel Valley so an emergency exit can be put through. Just want to let you know, that is untrue and illogical. I think Mark Twain said it best, "A lie can travel halfway around the world while truth is putting on its shoes." In conclusion, your recent decision has put me in a corner and left me with no choice but to petition the circuit court to overturn your recent decision and to protect my property Mayor, if you want to talk to me later, you know how to reach me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. Any further items under general public comment period? Any additional comments? If not, we will move on to the non-public hearing. These are items 1 through 52, and the chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period on items 1 through 44, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are in the public comment period on items 1 through 44. We do not have any speaker request forms. Does anyone wish to speak on any items 1 through 44, please? If not, the chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, the chair will ask if any of the items in the consent calendar, items 1 through 44, need to be removed. If so, please turn on your light. We have a light on from Alderman Bill Ocrepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull 14, please.
Item 14, very good. Any additional items to be removed? Please turn on your light. If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve items 1 through 44 with the exception of item 14, please.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 14, which is under legal and finance, and our chair of legal and finances, Alderman Sam Quaker, could you please read him item number 14, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 14 is approval of the capital plan for streets drainage MIP projects for September 2008, and I move approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Bill Ocrepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I attended the CIP meeting that day that we talked about the, these monies, and it appears that we had $50,000 that we were carrying forward. And it just seemed to me that if we have, if we have some money, maybe is there better use that we can use this money this year? And so I asked the public works director, Robert Ellis, if he had the capacity to take on additional work this year, and he, and he said yes. And so it occurred to me that we had the opportunity, we had the capacity, we had the money, we had, now all we had to do was have the will to use some of this money to fix some of the potholes. And to me, it just made sense. I mean, there's plenty of potholes, there's plenty of street repairs that we could be doing. We had the capacity, we had the money, and it just seemed to me like it was the right thing to do for our community to fix these potholes if we could. And so I made the motion that we move some of this money over, and in the wisdom of the group, they said no, but I'd like to bring this forward and, and at least challenge some of my colleagues to reconsider that, that motion, or that, the vote, to, to take some of this $50,000 instead of moving it all forward to the next, to next year, to use some of this money to repair some of the streets that we may be able to repair and make it less costly to, in the long run, to fix these streets. So I'd like to make a substitute motion out of that $50,000 to take $40,000 and move it into public works for repair of, minor repairs of streets, primarily potholes and whatever, that can be done with this additional monies. And that's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion. I think what we'll do is, we'll treat this motion as an amendment to the motion on the floor, because the motion on the floor was actually to approve the plan. So we will treat this as an amendment, so any discussion on that amendment, please. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we should go to our public works director to get a better understanding of what Alderman Ocrepke is talking about. And from a procedure standpoint, the, the CIP meeting that he is speaking about was in August. So when that, those minutes and that conversation already came forward, we already adopted that month's plan or a month ago. So he's not talking about the most recent CIP meeting, so procedurally, he's talking about a couple meetings ago, so I don't know how we go back and get that item and bring it forward, but I think we need some more explanation from our public works director.
Let's go to Robert Ellis, our public works director. Mr. Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the discussion Mr. Ocrepke is referring to was the August meeting, and I believe there was a little over $50,000 in the five-year, end of the fifth-year balance. The most recent CIP committee in that, that balance is actually a little over $24,000, so it's somewhat less than it was in August. And that is a floating balance. It depends on the bids that come in over the course of that time. Certainly, if, if we were asked to take on an additional 20, $30,000 worth of road improvement projects, that's, you know, really manpower-wise, we can certainly handle that. We manage over $10, $15 million project a year. So it wouldn't be a task that we couldn't accomplish if the council were to direct that money be used for street replacement projects.
Mr. Ellis? I think the motion on the floor was to take that and use it for filling potholes and so forth. Is that something that can be accomplished yet this year? Is that, are we getting too late in the season to actually inject money to make a difference this year?
Yeah. We're really, we really are pushing the limits of the construction yet to get out, set the design plans, get a bid through the process. It may be late. Certainly could be possible, but most likely, that project would lapse over into 2009.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I'm going to go back to Alderman Chapman, who still has...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Surely, I don't agree with fixing potholes in our community. I mean, I don't disagree with that. My, my problem with the motion that was made at CIP and tonight is just what our public works director just spoke of. That's a floating balance. So a month ago, that was $50,000. Three weeks ago, it was $24,000. Tomorrow, it might be $6,000. So, I mean, how do we start to allocate that money at the end of it? I mean, I think a couple months ago, it looked like it was over $100,000. So I think the recommendation that came out of the committee was a wise recommendation. No one's saying, "Let's not fix potholes," but at the same time, that's a five-year plan, so that money could be at any amount over the course of five years. I, I'll listen to the rest of the council, but I think that the, the CIP committee and the council a month ago made a wise decision not to tinker with such a small amount of money.
Thank you. Let's see. Bill Ocrepke has light on procedurally. I'll ask the question. Is there anyone who wishes to speak before Alderman Ocrepke speaks for a second time? If so, please turn on your light. Seeing none, we'll go back to Alderman Bill Ocrepke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Alderman Chapman's thoughts, and, and I probably was a little bit remiss by not catching it on the, when it came through in the last city council meeting. I was, thought I was keeping an eye on it, and this is the first time I had a chance to notice that we were approving a CIP plan. But it just seemed to me that although it was, could have been $200,000 three months ago, and now we're down to perhaps $6,000, it could be $50,000, $50,000 or $100,000 next month. The point is, is there was some money there that was left over. There was, there was capacity within our community to fix potholes, and I know there's some streets that could use it. And if we do fix, if we do make some of these minor repairs, it could save the community and the taxpayers additional money in the future. So my logic was, if we have some additional monies, that we could probably best use it making some of these repairs. I mean, we all say to our constituents that this is important, so I think it's important we fix potholes, and there was some money. And I have the motion, and, and I hope that we'll see where the rest of the council lies on that, but it seems to me that this is a good use of money.
Thank you. There again, I'll ask the procedural question. Alderman Chapman has his light on. Does anyone wish to speak for, for Alderman Chapman speaks for a second time? If so, please turn on your light. If not, we'll go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Again, Mr. Mayor and, and council, I, I don't disagree with the need that some streets need repair, and, and obviously, we should do whatever we can to accommodate that. I just think when we're talking about budgeting money and looking out over five years, and there's only $53,000, $50,000 left in the balance over a five-year period, I think it just gets a little dangerous to start tinkering with that money five years out. But if the council does decide to use that money to fix potholes, then I'm going to put in a plug now, let's fix them in Ward 5.
Isn't there a plan to fix these things?
In Ward 5, yes. Okay. Motion on the floor is an amendment to the original motion. Motion is to amend, to include using that, well, is it $50,000 or $26,000?
He said $20,000.
Okay.
The balance is $24,485.
Okay. Is that all right with the second? Okay. Very good. Motion on the floor is to amend it to designate $20,000 to go towards street repair, basically potholes. Seeing no further lights, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one aye, or, okay, with one aye. Very good. We are two.
I was an aye.
Oh, very good. I'm sorry. That's why I was asking. Motion passes, I'm, I'm sorry, the motion fails with two ayes, and it would be, the remainder would be no's. Yes, the cold's getting to me. Okay. We are back to the original motion. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We are on to the non-consent calendar, items 45 through 52. Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on items 45 through 52, please.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We do not have any speaker request forms on items 45 through 52. Let's just make sure nobody wants to speak on these items. If not, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to ordinances and item 45, and our chair of legal and finance, Alderman Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 45 is first reading of ordinance 5428 to allow lockable covers to prevent access to private pools by amending subsection 17.50.320, paragraph A, subsection 3 of the municipal code. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with the ordinance coming forward, but I think there needs to be some changes, and I will bring what I think those changes are to the next committee meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval of first reading. Seeing no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 46, please.
Item 46 is first reading of ordi, first reading of ordinance 5430 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of the municipal code for rezoning within the described properties requested by Spurlock Consulting, Inc. for Roy Burr for rezoning from General Ag District to low-density residential district located north of Katron Boulevard and west of Gold Needle Drive, and I move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 47, please.
Item 47 is second reading of ordinance 5422, adding bakery as a permitted use by amending section 17.22.020 of the municipal code, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 48, please.
Items 48 and 49, if I could just read those both, they're basically the same.
Sure. Can we do that together?
Items 48 and 49 are authorizations for mayor and finance officers to sign agreement with Azteca Corporation for City Works Enterprise License and implementation of permitting, and I move approval of both items.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Kevin, did you guys have any comments? Just questions? Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 50, please.
Item 50 is authorize mayor and finance officer to sign real estate purchase agreement with Rimrock Estates LLC. I'll yield to the floor for presentation.
Very good. We're going to go to Mr. Preston, and just to note, up on your dais, there should be a sheet from the city finance office with options as far as funding, if you could find that. I believe Mr. Preston is going to use that. Mr. Preston, city finance.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there is a letter dated October 3rd on the dais. If you take a look at that, I'd like to explain real briefly. Task directed to me was to come up with some options for funding sources, so working with Mr. Cole and some of my staff, and we came up with, with a few, and then a recommendation. First one is, Mr. Cole advises that, that he believes he has $50,000 in Parks and Recreation portion of the CIP budget that he could use toward the purchase of this land. That, that's part of it. The second one had to do with upfronting the $250,000 from the Parks and Recreation improvements. This is one, I did such a poor job of trying to explain it legal and finance, and essentially, I really didn't want to even get bogged down on that because the, to get paid back from the tax increment district is kind of an iffy thing, and it was so far out in the future, it's just not one I'm very comfortable with. Unless you want me to go into a great deal of detail trying to explain that, I just, just soon bypass that one. But that's one I had some difficulty with trying to explain, and I apologize for that. Third one there was to use CIP funds, which would reduce our balance down below the million-dollar mark that, that I prefer, and that would leave it at the $785,000. And then we could use 2012 funds, and then use funds from the sale of land that Mr. Quaker had suggested at the legal and finance meeting. I did put a few comments down below that, just to explain one reason why I'm not comfortable with the SAB funds, because we have committed, are committed much of that funds, and I don't want to get down where we're jeopardizing our assessment program with sidewalks and the streets. 2012 is what was pointed out at that meeting, was we would have to have a 2012 meeting. The tax increment district is not a guaranteed repayment, and funds from sale of land, which, which would be good, is one-time, good one-time use of funds, that would be sometime off in the future, and we're looking for funds right now. So my recommendation to the council would be go ahead and utilize $50,000 that Mr. Cole's identified for land purchases from his Parks and Recreation portion and the CIP, and then borrow $200,000 from the CIP balance, and then replenish both of these from some future land sale. So that's my recommendations. I'm prepared to respond to any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Can we have a motion on the floor for discussion, please?
Make that motion.
Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second for discussion, and that recommendation is to utilize $50,000 from the Park and Rec CIP fund and to borrow $200,000 from the CIP balance and replenish both of these funds when we can go ahead and execute some land sales. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Whoops. There you go, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. Question regarding this, and I, and I do support the motion, however, you know, I wanted to make sure that we do this the right way in, in terms of making the decision that we're replenishing this from the sale of land. I mean, in essence, we're issuing an IOU to two funds, and there's a risk to that because right now, there, there hasn't been much opposition to the idea of, of selling the remainder of the Wally Byam site, but it also hasn't been fully and adequately discussed in the community either. So I, I'm concerned a little bit about putting the cart, cart before the horse, and I just I'd like to ask Jim, what is the procedure for, for selling the, the, either the Wally Byam site or the Highway 16 land? I mean, what, what needs to happen to, to bring that forward? Is that coming back to legal and finance for an appraisal and, and discussion, or what's the next step so that we can fulfill the other part of this?
Mr. Preston.
If, if I could, and Mr. Green can correct now, but the very next step would be the council would have to take action to direct us to go ahead and proceed with the sale of that land. And then after that, there's a number of different ways that you can transfer government, or city property. One is, you know, you use a realtor, which is approved quite successful, you can advertise it and, and take, take the bid on that. The other one is you, which I don't recommend, transfer it to another government entity. That's not going to do us any good, but that's pretty much what I understand. Maybe Mr. Green wants to clarify that a little bit.
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the council is aware that you've appointed a board of freeholders to look at the platted portion of the Wally Byam site. The council is interested in looking at the rest of the Wally Byam site. You could certainly do that. We would need direction to move that forward, and that would be appropriate at a future legal and finance committee meeting. So as far as the actual procedure, though, that's something that the finance office is going to have to note, and I'm guessing they will not lose track of that, to remind the council, if there is a future land sale, the council intended to use a portion of those proceeds to replenish these two funds.
Thank you, Mayor. Assuming that things move, you know, fairly quickly and, and there aren't any major hitches, how long would it theoretically take to sell the balance of that property?
Mr. Preston?
I don't, I'm kind of looking at Marcia. She might have a little bit better idea on the total, like, the time with all the process, if I could.
Well, I, I think a couple things arise. Number one is the fact that we'd have to plat. That would certainly take some time. We would have to put together a board of freeholders if we wanted someone other than what we currently have appointed, and whether or not the city council wants to go out and, and get an additional appraisal. So I think probably realistically, you're probably talking six months, Marcia, four to six months. Am I close? Okay.
Just one more comment, Mayor, and I'll yield to, like to see what the rest of the council thinks on this as well, but I feel a little bit caught in the middle because I'm in favor of, of purchasing this property. What I'm not in favor of is issuing IOUs to, to two very important city funds and, and at the very real risk of neither of those funds being paid back. And I'm, I'm, so I'm concerned about the, the process here, and so I'd like to see what the rest of the council thinks, but I, I think we may be putting the cart before the horse, but buying this property tonight without having a locked-in funding source to replenish those two funds.
Yep. Thank you. Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification on the motion. In addition to the identified funding source, was it the intent that we approve the agreement In addition to the identified funding source, was it the intent that we approve the agreement that's linked for the purchase?
It is. Very good. Everyone clear on the motion? Everyone clear on the motion? Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
As this discussion moves forward, my understanding, though, is that the Highway sixteen property is platted, and that wouldn't be an issue. Am I correct in understanding that?
Let's go to Marcia Hawkins.
That property is platted, but you do not have an appraisal on it. So you're probably looking at six months to get the appraisal completed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Everyone clear on the motion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing no further lights, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Preston, bill list.
Bill list? How about bids, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, bids. Too much cold medicine.
No problem. Can adjust. Okay, we have the -- just the one item this evening, Mayor, and that's the authorized mayor and finance -- excuse me, as you were. Is the East Nebraska Street Drainage Improvement Project. And we received five bids as listed, and staff is recommending accepting the bid for Warax Excavating Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-four cents.
So move. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second for approval of the bid from Warax Excavation for a hundred. Read that to me, I can't quite read it.
Hundred and six, eight ninety, and eighty-four cents.
Very good. Everyone clear on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. With that, that does take us to -- I do not have any items under the mayor's items, or there were no items added under council items or liaison reports. So that does take us to staff items in the twenty-twelve update. Mr. Ellis, did you have an update on twenty-twelve?
Yes, I do, Mayor. I only have a couple of items to report for the project to replace playground equipment. We have two additional costs for the Wilderness Park, one for rubber mulch and one for some play equipment. Another project that we have an updated cost on would be for the Roosevelt Park Complex. We have a building permit in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and ninety. Other than that, there are no new expenditures to report.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, we have -- do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge your report. Any discussions on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Item thirty-one relating to the soccer complex. Under O and M, it says that the O and M costs would be paid by soccer Rapid City. I said I'd like to have a more of a firm number, if possible, and what the O and M costs will be, and if additional employees be required for the maintenance of twenty-six additional, twenty-five additional fields. So I don't need an answer tonight, but I would sure like to see that on the next update.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion is to acknowledge in the report. Seeing no further lights, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to the public hearing items, items fifty-three through eighty-six. And the chair will look for a motion to open the public hearing on items fifty-three through eighty-six. Please. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing items, items fifty-three through eighty-six. We have no speaker request forms. And during this part, we do leave the public comment period open till the end. So we'll move on, and we are on to the continued public hearing consent items, items fifty-three through seventy-seven. And the chair will ask, are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar from either the staff or the city council? From the consent calendar? Seeing none. Chair will look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, item fifty-three through seventy-seven. Please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent calendar, items fifty-three through seventy-seven. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the public consent calendar items. The chair will look for a motion to close the public hearing on items fifty-three through eighty-six. Please.
So move.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on items fifty-three through eighty-six. Seeing no lights, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to the consent public hearing items, items seventy-eight through eighty-four. Seventy-eight through eighty-four. And the chair would ask if any of these items, seventy-eight through eighty-four, need to be pulled from the consent calendar. If so, please turn on your light. Seeing no lights, chair will look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items seventy-eight through eighty-four. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We are on to the non-consent public hearing items, items eighty-six and eighty-seven. And with that, let's see, Mr. Kroger, could you please read in item number eighty-five? Please.
Number eighty-five is a request by Advanced Engineering and Surveying and D.C. Scott Surveying, Incorporated for Blue New Enterprises LLC for variance to subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install streetlight conduit sewer and additional pavement along Lean Street as per chapter sixteen point six of the Rapid Save Municipal Code